Aunt Patty's on the square. Park County's oldest antique mall with 22 years on the southeast corner of the square. We have 25 dealers who take great pride in stocking and maintaining their booths. In 7,500 square feet, you can find almost everything from the smallest penknife to great jewelry, vintage coins, sports cards, dishes like Grandma had, all the way to a large piece of furniture. We're open seven days a week. Our hours are Monday through Saturday, 10 to 5, and Sunday noon to 5.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright. Thanks for coming. It's been a busy week. Lots of, lots of stuff going on. Cindy Todd is keeping us going the right direction, I think. So, thanks Cindy ahead of time. Appreciate that. Many, many things in the air at the time. So, let us get going here and we'll see where we are. Alright, we have two sets of minutes to approve for June 20th and then last week's July 5th.
Yeah, Bruce wasn't here on the 20th, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for June 20th, 2022.
And I'm second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then we need to approve for last week.
Can I make a motion to approve the minutes for July 5th, 2022?
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Approved. Alright, then we have payroll. The amount of $196,133.38.
So, I'll make a motion to reapprove payroll in the amount of $196,133.38.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Alright, then we need to acknowledge receipt of the payroll claims accounts payable report and that amounts to $93,104.29.
And I'll make a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the payroll claims, the amount of $93,104.29.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I think everybody here understands how that works and why we do that. We'll discuss that.
Yeah. That's one here.
You go with you.
Bruce does not need that.
Okay. And we have a new business?
I have an anti-check for the computer his Harris computer system for $629.71.
I'd make that motion to reprove the anti-check after $629.71.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we have a request here from a plant commission for an ordinance approving a phase one plat of Nevis State subdivision. Says Nick's gonna talk about it, so what you got?
Well...
Oh, sure? That's why you're here.
I'm sure.
She's here, so...
Whether or not, so this is the plat of phase one.
How many phases are we talking about?
Two for sure, possibly three.
Nevis State's, is that the Nevis campground?
Yes.
Okay.
Campground is gone.
Okay.
This was basically the land closest to the water, I think, was phase one.
Okay. I thought you were, would've been it. Do you see it yet?
Yeah, originally.
Nevis campground out on the other side of Lake Fair.
No way.
Eight lots, but he changed it to seven. Either each of those lots is an acre or more.
Yeah, I think two of them was too little tight from the old one and...
Right.
He worked it out so I had access.
So, just creating new, new plats with new descriptions so they can sell them individually then?
And yes, and Chris went in and wiped out all of the addresses at the request of Jackson. I believe the roads are gonna stay the same, but there will be new addresses assigned as those lots are sold.
Okay.
And...
Is there gonna be an HOA or anything?
Yes.
Covenant and restrictions or... Do we need to approve any of that stuff for the HOAs or anything?
And he did this on Mylar, so I need your signatures on the Mylar. And then Laura has the hard copy of the ornaments.
Okay. So, we've seen a motion. Do we need, if it takes an ordinance, do we need to have time for an ordinance? Or can we do it now with the same day, same meeting?
I did the motion to adopt same day, same meeting.
We need, we need us to sign all this?
Yeah, so I need your signatures dated today and your signatures and then Laura to attest.
Okay. So, what's your wishes, guys?
I have no problem with it.
So, Dan's heard all of it, probably anyway.
I think it's a good thing. Trainers all gone and...
So, I'll go ahead and make a motion. First, I'll make a motion to adopt this ordinance same day, same meeting.
And I'll second that.
Okay, and then you second to adopt the, do we have an ordinance number?
What is it gonna be?
It's gonna be 2022-06. And I have the hard copy for you to...
Yeah, she has the copy for signatures.
2022-06?
Yes.
Okay. So, Dan made the motion to approve our number.
I second it.
Okay, 2022-06, same day, same meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, then is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance 2022-6.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, we need to, if you guys don't mind, if you come over here and need to sign this fancy thing here. This is the 18th day?
Yes.
Of July. Now, I'll sign the top that way and you come down and you won't mess with me probably. It's the first one of those I've seen.
That's the way they did it.
Never seen.
That's the first one I remember. Usually that's how they evolve them.
But on that, on that material? Well, really? We've never had, dealt with one of those four that I know of.
Yeah.
Okay. Go over there and pass down the bottom of there. Just put it here.
Shouldn't show you the whole of those. Stuff under those.
Hard to see.
Yes. I'll put the date on it also to test it. Probably should.
There's the hard copies. Yours?
Yep.
You want me to take that down, Laura, or just come down?
Can, can we get a copy of it because I have to have the original?
Okay.
In our file.
And that's, I'll have that one recorded.
Okay. This stays in our file and you have the recorded and I can have a copy of it.
Okay, I'll get it tomorrow.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
Alright, we have our contract in front of us, sir, from SRI.
Okay, I sent the, copied the contract earlier to Nick to review.
It's fine, it's standard language. It has an opt-out period too with notice, so...
And it's normally the same one that we do each year in order to have the tax up?
Yep.
And this very standard with all the other counties gets the same one?
Yep. Sir, motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, we approve the contract for SRI for the sale.
I'll second that.
Move second to adopt contract for sales, for the tax sales with SRI as we've done in the past. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. Got a few things we've been, here, just to cover those real quick. Don's been talking with, and I've been talking with Don with the Veterans Service Officer. We'd like to clean up the Veterans Memorial on the northwest corner of the square. There are two wooden posts in the ground that have flags on them and they really are tripping hazards. There's just four by four posts that are stuck in the ground on each side. He'd like to remove those and figure out some other way to do those two little flags that are on. If you could do that, but I didn't want to tell him it was okay without your approval to take, to pull those posts out. And the Veterans Service Officer was fine with removing those two wooden posts. It's just two wooden posts in the ground with a small American flag stuck, stuck on it. So, you're okay with taking those down?
Yep.
Okay. The other part of that is to clean, I'd like to clean the memorial. I've done some research on that. It's a brass plate, of course, a big brass plate. I can power wash the, the stone, whatever that is, if it's concrete. I'm not sure what that is. It sounds like I want to know, but they don't recommend any chemicals on that. They also don't recommend any chemicals for brush on the brass plate, but some soft, soft brush with some mild detergent first to see how, if that brings it back, which it probably will. But I, I would rather do that myself than have somebody come and do it. They said, "You do not power wash the brass plate, you'll have swirls all through with the power washing went." So, if it's okay with you guys, I'll power wash that.
I have no problem with it.
I'll start off with a small corner of it to see how the soap I have, whether it be Dawn or whatever it will be, and see how that would do when cleaning that and go from there. It'd be, it'd take a while. We'll, we'll get there then. We have a contract that I gave you copies of there. We met with Chris O'Brien and Ryan Cleaver and I met. We're making the change of workhorse to the different emails and different websites as well. This is to move, migrate the emails. It's a one-time cost of $9,000...
$417.
$417. And then he recommends, his recommendation was the number two option on the front page of Matrix there, which is the Microsoft 365 Business Basic, which is $6,000 a year, then over $510 a month. So, that's his recommendation, so... Want to take a minute to look at it, see what you think, but we, and that will be ongoing. Then we'll have a plan in place as we get new computers moving on. Look, because now, now I talked with Roy already with the, and John Pratt with the council. We're gonna have costs now that we never have before. We're gonna have to have licenses for all these things on a yearly basis. Emails are gonna have to have a cost on every email every year now from going forward. All, all these will be stored in the cloud, of course, and, and it's just a cost of business. That's the way it's gonna have to be. Any concerns, Nick, on that contract at all?
No, I have no concern.
I asked Roy about creating a line in the commissioner's budget for this new IT stuff, these new costs. We already have a line in commissioner's budget for software and services. There's money in that. It's nothing that we ever spend out of, but I know it's used sometimes for some claims. And Laura would know better than I certainly. What mainly comes out of that, that line?
My kind of, I'd have to go look for it from there.
The issue is...
But I did set up a new line for IT services today, the commissioner's line.
It's in the commissioner's line? Okay.
Commissioner's line, so then he does the budget.
Okay.
We have a new IT service line. I need the commissioner's fund.
Okay, because that's why my suggestion to Roy was that we do it that way, put it under commissioner's budget. He was gonna look at doing it just, I think, in our general fund budget, but it'd make more sense to me to have it, since it involves contracts and purchases of services, that we should have it under our line since we have to approve all those anyway. Chris had the concern that, of course, additional appropriation is always concerned. Being the military guy that he is, of course, he expects when you get a budget, you live in that budget and that's what that budget's for, but we move money around all the time in the county, so... Yeah, but if you need something, you go to the highway department, for example. It may come out of commissioner's services fund. They just reappropriate that and it's, it's confused. I think it's frustrating to him as well, but it's just, that's just the way counties operate. It's just the way it is. And so, Roy is fine with money. He understands that they're gonna spend money that haven't spent before and we just have to, where we're gonna put it. So, since you already got a line created, then maybe the council will go along with that and putting it there. That way, we can have contract, have a, not control over spending the money, but we know where it's all. It's all congregated, it was the way where they use it with Roy. I wanted it all in one place when we see what all is coming out here. Because I think probably we've asked some IT costs out of various, various lines and various places throughout the years.
A lot of those, I mean rainy day too.
Yes, and, and the big thing is rainy days going away, of course, so we gotta find someplace to do that. So, it makes sense to me, if it makes sense to you, to have a line in the commissioner's budget for all the money to go into and all the money to come out of for that type of thing, so... So, you're okay with this contract then?
I didn't have any.
Yeah, and it's, you know, we...
It's gonna have to happen.
Yes, it's gonna have to. So, I'd make the motion, I, I would, I'd make the recommendation, I'd make the motion that we go along with the recommendation of the IT director, Randy Clear, that we engage with Matrix and go along with the Microsoft 365 Business Basic at a cost of $6,120 a year, but we pay it monthly at the rate of the lower one of $510 a month. And I'll also include then that we approve the Matrix for the one-time cost of the setup of $9,000... Did you say 14?
$417.50.
Okay. $9,417.50, I see that paid.
And I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved second to approve the contracts with Matrix integration as in request of the IT director. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
To, just for a second to jump back, kind of rattle my brain here on the courthouse. I ran into Jeff Cooper during the fair and he said his cousin is up here from Florida, gonna be up here for a while, and he's done business in professional landscaping all his life. He's an architect. And he said to mention to you guys that his cousin said he was willing to help Don in voluntary his time to do landscaping at the courthouse.
Hello, Jerry?
If they want anything done while he was, while he was here and he's gonna be here for a while. So, Jeff said to have Don get a hold of him.
Okay, and then...
And he would like to help you because he said there's several things they could do.
Okay, if you're gonna let, let him know that, and I'm fine with that, if you're fine with that. You would just need to let Carla know, she has a volunteers list, so you can be covered under our insurance. If there's an issue, she would just put him on the volunteers list and you just need his name.
I'll just get with him and have him get with Don and...
And have Don...
If Don wants help with around there.
Okay, sounds great. Alright. I have something else here. I'm assuming that Randy will have a better copy than I just have this for the contract, so... If he does have, I'll go ahead and sign a paper contract of it since we approved it. He's just gotta, gotta place there where it's accepted by. I will sign that, but if he has a different one, I can come in and sign that as well.
Yeah, bring it to next week.
So, we've approved this, so I would just go ahead and sign it. That's okay with you guys? Date accepted today?
Yep.
And then we'll just, if we get a better one, we'll, we'll do that. So, there's that one. You can give that to her and then I'll have this one. Signature page, it does have all the things that they will do, the commissioner services that will get. One of those pages somewhere. It's got a description on the front page there.
Page one, client responsibilities?
Yes.
Which one did I have?
It's page one of five, two of five, and three of five. The other two were the other, other part. So, I guess I'll just sign this someplace. There's no signature page for it, but it shows what we're getting for what we're purchasing.
You have copies of...
Oh, yeah, there is up the top.
On the front.
Yes, there is up the top. We already talked about the ballards that we were requested before to approve the ballards that the Vermin County is going to buy and put on the Walk Bridge at Montezuma. And we felt that should be their expense and it is, because we have access to our part of the project for ambulance, so that's okay. And then that's, that's all I got then. Alright. Old business, no, Nick is still working on, I've talked with Nick, Nick here, he was gonna send a contract to, to Nick. He apologized, he thought that, I guess he didn't realize he needed to send an updated copy of it. So, that's probably why he sent you before.
So, we have it, but it's, Laura has it in her email. I don't have it in my emails, but...
So, I'd make a motion, you said you'd already looked at it.
I looked at it, yeah, I just didn't print it.
If you remember, we, did we approve it before, but you were gonna get the...
You approved signature pending my review, so it just requires signature.
Yeah, so we don't need to prove it yet, we already have. We just need to sign.
I just hadn't seen it yet.
Yeah, okay. We were just waiting on a, on a reprinted, reprinted...
So, you have to stop by Laura's office and sign it.
Yeah, I can do that. Okay, do you guys have any old business?
Nope.
Okay, let's get right at it, then Justin's not here. And just so you know, somebody in this room got a piece of great copper a while ago. Not to mention John Barton's name to anybody, just so you know, like he was the one whining about not getting any copper, so I brought him some, so you're a good take now. You're all my... We have a thing, we do have a thing that he needs. If you remember, we, we okayed him buying a camera at the cost of between $500 and $600 bucks. So, to better project, I think particularly the audio is what we were talking about particularly, I think, whether it's or the camera as well. Both?
It's the, it's, it's both.
Okay. And so, we approved that, but then we had the discussion whether it was, whether he was gonna own the camera or whether we were going to own the camera. And then we couldn't front him the money without, without purchasing it, without approving a specific check for that. So, he sent me a message today, so I am assuming, and correct me, Nick and Laura, if I'm wrong here, I'm assuming that since we have a specific number, we can go ahead and approve an out-of-cycle check for that amount and then you can deliver that check to them. Is that, that the way that will work for you? We make the check to the company?
We need a claim before we can do that.
Okay, well, we have a copy of that. Yeah, we have an invoice for that, so I'll see if I can send that to you.
How much is it?
Alright, I'll tell you here in just a moment.
Because we've only got $500, not long.
We have five, it's $545.52 for the order, order total.
$500 and what?
$545.52.
So, I'll have to find the rest of it.
So, the company...
Move some money around and for the $45.52, that's not gonna be a problem. I can get the money back now.
Okay. This email doesn't have a name of company? Who do we admit to killing?
It's Amazon, so you're gonna make the check out to...
Oh, to Amazon?
I thought you were gonna make it out to me and then...
But he'll just pay for it.
And I was gonna put it in my account and order it.
Okay, I'm okay with that, if you guys are okay with that. So, we just need the, the copy of the invoice here from Amazon to Laura before she can give you a check for that? Wouldn't it be easier if I just go ahead and buy it and put it on my credit card and then just we, reimbursed me for it? Is that easier than doing that other stuff?
That'd be better.
That'd be easier.
Why don't I just go ahead and buy it and, and then when I get the, get the invoice from them, then, then I will bring it to here and they can just write me a check for it. John just didn't have a credit card, do it on, so that's why, it's been more of a challenge for him than otherwise. So, with your permission, then I'll just go ahead and purchase it on Amazon, put it on my account and then we'll just give a check to me and then we'll, commissioners, I'll put it in the commissioner's name so we'll open it, but then you have camera, it will stay here and then he'll use it for these meetings in this location. Alright, I'll take care of that. So, I'll get with you after meeting.
Okay.
You don't have time any night, right? It's just the first Monday you have a meeting?
I have a prom fill.
Oh, you do have one too? So, may I have to leave for that? Okay. So, we'll get together with that then. Okay, Randy?
I can do it.
We're doing good, how you doing?
Alright.
Chips feel done?
Yeah, just got two full payment ones on 100 hours to do.
Great. Everything working okay?
Yeah, we'll do that tomorrow and Wednesday, hope to get started paying.
Super. I'm excited to get that done.
So, I just took care of all my business.
Okay, it's easy, I like it.
I do have a contract for you to sign.
Okay.
It's our contract with Milestone.
Okay. With the new numbers?
Yeah.
$173,000 a mile instead of $100,000 a mile?
Yeah. Yeah. It just has a total number.
Yeah, okay.
And I forget what that was.
I think it's $173,000 a mile. I don't remember what the total number was, but I remember Dan figured it was like five point seven miles now instead of 10 and a half getting before or something, yeah?
It's in here somewhere.
I won't, yeah. It's for the total mini-crossing? This would be nine, nine million something?
Nine hundred...
I mean, nine hundred thousand something?
Yeah, well, it's over that. It's a million something, I forgot now. Oh, there we go. A million, 157,670.10.
That's included our match. I won't put that on my credit card, we'll go ahead and...
Why not?
Have John advance it and we'll reimburse it.
Yeah, yeah, you do that.
This is the contract that we made out.
Yes.
So, Nick's already looked at it.
Okay. So, this is for the spending of this last match here with, that we got the money from Milestone and our match went into it, the total cost of the jobs that we contracted for was the number that Randy said. Well, remember what page you found that on? There it is. So, I'll make a motion, we approve the agreement with Milestone Contractors.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And when will this work be done?
Well, we put in there after August first.
After August first of this year?
Yeah.
Alright. Thanks, sir.
That'd be great.
So, you're looking to pave from, us pave from Strawberry Road to Bloomingdale and then, and then Golf Course Road from Beedale Road to 41. How long do you think it'll take to do that?
Well, it'll be done probably two, a little less.
Okay, great. I drove the other day, just see how it was. I went to Savannah, I went up and I came all the way from the county line south. That'd be a nice, nice road all the way through there, so it'd be good access.
That depends on all the trucks.
I have a request, I don't know that will impact you, but just to let you know, I got a request from the sheriff. AI camp out there asked that we close the road. FC Road there, Ember Road. F C, uh, road there, Camp Road, on, um, August fifteenth for forty-five minutes, nine forty-five to ten thirty, just so they can have a group hike down that road and back, I guess, so they can all go together and have a, have a event. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I don't think.
Do you have signs you could put up showing that it's only forty-five minutes closing? Say it's gonna be closed from, say, nine thirty to, to ten thirty and.
Yeah, we put signs up.
If we could put them up a few days ahead of time, let, let people know that if they went to town, they came back, it's gonna be closed at nine thirty, you have to find another way around. Be pretty tough to find another way around if you live one of those houses on F C A Camp Road. You're all the way up around Weapaco or whatever that is and all the way around there, so it'd be tough to.
Hold the hole.
They need it from forty-seven just to the F C A camp.
Just to the F C.
There's only a couple houses there, that's not much.
Two houses, yeah, High Towers or used to be and, and then.
And I'm not even sure that, that would have to be closed at High Tower, that, that, uh, Matt, uh, what's his name, former student lives there, I'm sure they could.
Where High Tower live?
Yeah, they, they could sure to get in and out of there. Who lives in the old, in the house that used to be the director's house, if they don't.
I don't know.
That'd be the only one I'd be concerned about. But you got people living a lot beyond there, they can't drive through, they'd have to come in from the other side, that's pretty long trip.
That's not one of their people that lives in the brick house anymore?
Maybe, I just don't know.
I don't know either.
But there are houses beyond that, you know, the tag house and all those people on, on beyond the F C A Camp, Camp Road, that they wouldn't be able to get through for forty-five minutes either, so we just need to get signs up, let them know it's gonna be closed.
Yeah, they'd have to.
But that's closed. That, yeah, be closed from nine thirty to ten thirty, ought to be sufficient. So if your guys are, if Randy's okay with that, the sheriff's okay with that, then I'd make the motion that we authorize the highway department to close F C A Road from State Route forty-seven to the campus for, uh, the time period of nine thirty A M. to ten thirty A M. on August fifteenth.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Now, what, what, the date on that?
Fifteenth. August fifteenth. It's Monday. From nine thirty to ten thirty. That all you got for us?
That's all I have.
Nothing I should eat to good.
I have one question, did you happen to get ahold of that guy at the corner of New Discovery? No, I haven't. I've been on the chipper and there, they may have had a chance.
Okay. Seems like there was another question I did have before you though, but I didn't write it down, if I did. Nope, so, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Randy.
Have a good day. Oh, you too.
Any comments from the public that we can hear, the public? No, Cindy, nothing?
I mean, nothing really, maybe just an update on the website, as we worked last week on, you know, any final questions for the credit card processing. Um, Randy has the information now to install the new swipe devices and the URLs and things to get that going. Um, there's a couple department heads that will need to do like a test deposit into the appropriate accounts. Uh, once that is completed, then we'll be able to switch, or plan on a date to switch things over.
I have a question, because Chris is of a different opinion. My, my understanding, and it doesn't matter, I'm not gonna change anything, but my understanding was once we signed up with the state and got on their website and their services, that we would also be covered then under their ransomware and malware insurance, or is that just for the website itself?
No, the, the only thing that the website allows is, it is a secure website, so any transactions that are done are locked down by the state. It does not make us eligible for their insurance or ransomware program. That is something we have to do separately. And we'll be eligible once we do the email conversion.
Right, and once we get the M F A done, then we'll be, we'll be okay then. I, I was just thinking that we were eligible then to be on their program, so that'd find a room, okay?
No, they don't allow that.
I don't know what year that went away, I know we were covered, we did purchase I T insurance, we did, um, have that and then one year during renewals, it wasn't there anymore, because the company had changed and we weren't eligible because we didn't have the multi.
And that was just last year.
Was it the first year, see, that's what I thought, I thought we'd always had it before that, I thought we had.
George has always invited that on.
Right, 'cause I, I was sure we had that.
Yeah, so last year was the only one, because we weren't compliant.
Right, and we can't get it through what Randy had us on now.
Right now.
Right, yeah, right now, we can't get it there, so we're kind of stuck in the middle there for a while. We were, we're okay, because Randy makes sure things are going through the cloud, so it's all retrievable if we have to, but that doesn't mean they can't do other things besides that, so. So soon we get this, what we just approved, that, that will get us to the point where we'll have, and it's not multifaceted, it's multi-what? What's the other word? It's an F word.
Yes, it is, multi-factor.
Factor, multi-factor, where you, you get a code sent to your phone, whatever, then put that code in, so you have more than one, just a password getting in.
And that's not every time, I mean, it's an occasional check that asks for that. But it allows, what the website transition allows for is an authentication, because you do have to go through the Access Indiana for us as administrators or anybody going in and making any changes to the website. It protects us from that part kind of getting hacked.
Emails that do require the M F, the multi thing, but they all do now, any, any transaction doing like, you gotta have a multi. You get a code sent to you on to your phone anyway, so it's just nothing new, it's just another thing dragging us along, so we're getting there. I have nothing else, do you guys have anything else? Motion adjourned?
I can motion adjourned, Nick.
Yeah.